Yeah, we actually went down in the basement, I guess. You know, we have that alert sent here. What usually you say you text it. Phone call. Call this room as you said. Take cover. Yeah. The wind blow it all set it's stopped. You look at the flags like it's not moving all day. Yeah, that's kind of scary. Oh, yeah. No, I mean, I didn't pick up a lot of sticks.
Yeah, it was three.
Another day. About all I can say.
I just wish people would slow down.
I just say within the three. Listen to Pete's advice and call Don.
Oh, and the word is just probably. You tell you that the zoning. I don't know that it ever got put in there. I mean, way back then. Well, we had one in the middle of the town, I think, was it?
So I heard anything about that.
This stuff we've got to take home. What are you talking about that? He's too crazy because he has some.
But it's not that it's a different.
I didn't do that either.
Oh, it's probably Delta eight marijuana. No, or Delta ten. It's THC, but it's not so double. It's a psychoactive one. The W A P L pretend it's not psychoactive. But if that is some of the same.
Go through the background, check to come in arrest.
Kind of. It's nine o'clock, should we call the order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or corrections to the minutes of our October fifth. Under, under public defender, which I think it would be some clarification where it has the amount one hundred and thirty two thousand should be maybe slashed per year.
Okay.
For a three-year contract or something like that. All right. Anything? Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes? For jump, second by example. Any discussion, all in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment. We want to take, Leland, are you going to be in it often? Or Dylan, either one?
I, I don't have anything. I'm just here if you guys have questions for me.
Okay.
I just have a question. On the bidding process.
Yep.
Okay. We have the right to reject any and all, yes, correct? And we so stated?
It's usually stated in the act, like that.
Yeah, it's stated in the act.
And, and if you do say you reject a bid, you could go back and, you know, like ask him to counter or something like that.
Well, you can reopen the bidding process. Anything else for me this morning?
I don't have anything.
All right, miss Ann, thanks a million, Dylan. Leland, you go.
Do you want me to go to the meeting in Mitchell in February? If Tim and Yoko, that would satisfy the grant.
Yeah, I would think that would be.
Well, we start getting rooms and meals and I think that doesn't take a lot out of the grant. We're not getting a whole lot anyway.
Okay, if you don't think it's necessary.
I'll go to the November one because that kind of introduced some stuff because there's, you know, that's all the colonies right around us, so. And I figured I'd do paperwork and get them going today. We're on payroll and everything. That's okay with you?
Sure.
And I haven't got any bids yet on spray for, hopefully this week I can get most of them on an Tuesday. See how much is going up and everyone get it now or wait till spring? Because one guy went and bought grassland or grazing, which is the same as what we phrase grassland, but our grassland is right away approved. Grazing isn't, but they were spraying pasture. He said that already went up. I think it's going to follow up.
I think soon you can lock it down.
Better try to get some order, but it's my opinion. What do you think, Joe?
So I have, well, this is through the distributor today is I buy non-chemicals and I resell. Uh, my cost on that is thirty, uh, and there's a generic of grassland out. It's called gunslinger. They have their two hundred fifty pound tugs or two, you can buy two and a half, two and a half is probably easier. Uh, it is thirty-three dollars and fifty cents is my cost. So I think he said you're buying it for like thirty-six or thirty-seven.
Is it the lower smell or is it?
It's the generic of a grassland.
Oh, it'll have the strong smell, yeah.
No, it should, it should be the same thing, just generic.
If anything, I went with that lower smell. I haven't had a home call. People complaining I spray mine because I think they don't. You know, where the, the, you got Trump, the straight, don't you hear from those who are buying?
He says it's retailing for thirty, maybe forty dollars. So there are two dollar charges for that.
Yes, my opinion, you guys figure it out and bring it back and say, I'd like to sit it over.
Did you just see gas today? I looked in the valley, went from three oh four to three twenty-nine. One jump.
Three twenty-nine? Oh, see ours have been at three fourteen.
Yeah. Same, same gas station too, so it's kind of, it's all.
How much you got?
Some was water, Tom.
I've got one. That's all I got left.
And then you got winterizing, right?
No, I got winterizing. I started that yesterday, but we'll go down to the week.
Or did you get done?
Yeah.
I haven't been in the mission.
Oh.
I got a toll market. I figured we'd run around.
Why does one and night for work or for stuff when you want to be done or whatever, right after winterizing?
That's only, that's the only way we can actually make.
Because he hasn't, he hasn't sprayed ditches. I'll probably have to drive for him one day in spring for sure.
Well, the other two should know something too, whatever, I guess.
They're pretty much set on what they do. They just hop in the truck and go. They turn in time cards, that's about all I seen them this year. I think I talked to them twice while I was working, but, I mean, I see Roger every day almost anything, but. Yeah, it's just a matter of that way I can show them, you know, what to do and should I, in the spring, I don't know. Should I do like school calls or cemetery? Should I be on, you know, be on hand for them? It's not anything spectacular, but just to show them, you know, how, how to spray it and whatnot. Because everybody knows me, I thought.
I'd like to see you work a little bit in the spring with them to give.
And a couple pounds should cycle a little bit too. And that's usually when they're spraying ditches, but work days and, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to be steady doing everything. Won't be like, you know, we're doubling up on everything. Give them whatever.
Yeah, because your, your partner isn't going to be working anymore either, is she?
No.
She is, so we're going to be sure.
She'll only drive for me. I mean, Joe hasn't sprayed ditches, we're going to, we go on one or two days, so.
Exactly.
If we have to book for an ass for another driver or you've got someone in mind, you can. I think the only requirement for that is eighteen and a driver's license, basically, per driver.
Okay.
Is there a list of certification reading that I have to have or make sure that, no, just probably check that out. I think, I mean, I've got the commercial and some of that, but I don't know if there's a.
You have that list, Joe, I apologize for not sharing that with you. I thought that was.
We do private people's yards? Um, I did three or four last year. Got three last, about three. I know the cemetery, you know, school. I am doing private people's.
Yeah.
The library is trying to kill him somebody.
We were talking about that. Yeah, I think that's probably a new idea.
So, yeah, there will be, there's a couple that I'll have. I don't have a little bit of a, and or the right wing. Sorry, no.
Probably have, but like the farmers, they have usually the general and one. Ornamental that's we're doing like yards and school and the cemetery. The right away for the ditcher and rosenberg, that's for the puffer gophers. They have somebody who might want to order, you know, puffer gophers for you. And that's the only reason I care, but I, I haven't been off. I have the puffer gophers for a while.
So are, are you planning on working till like the first of the year and then go over a couple times in the spring as kind of a plan or?
Yeah, I can go in. Just to show you how to do the ditches.
Okay, yeah, well, that's fine, maybe.
I'd probably be, um, till the end of May and then first of June. If you want to put a date in it or, um, anything to go with spraying ditches, I, that's not my favorite part of this. At ten o'clock in the morning, you get very sleepy.
So that's why you get also to want something to treat. Get a sleep there.
All right, Leland, thank, thanks a lot for your report. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, how, uh, is your? Trying to stop in and she doesn't want things going on. This, Leland, do you come here? Is, is there not a, you?
No, no.
You can either come in at nine o'clock during public comment or else you can give me a call and I can put you on the agenda.
Okay. That was it?
All right.
Thanks, Archie.
Thanks, guys. Jim, what have you have for us today?
Just update on what we did Saturday evening, you know, weather spotters out. The only reason I did the report is because we did activate the other one, just so you're aware of that and all that process. Just where there's any questions and information about why we did what we did. Some people said it wasn't that bad, some people said it wasn't. So we went with, with the rotations that were noticed by Thursday, now by Roswell, over by Rudebush Corner. We're not trying well to just activate it and we think that's what we do. If you get any feedback, that's why we did what we did.
One thing I noticed first ever is like they get the upward sense thing, which is usually just a text. I see a phone ring this time, I guess. That's a message. That's, that's pretty cool.
I thought it was a really good, really good question. What happened around the first of October, they approved what's called High Plaza. It's the integrated public warning system. And that's done by the National Weather Service. That's not done by alert sense.
Okay.
You send out three or four alert sense notices of that. The only time the weather service does that is in, in the event of a warning or radar indicated. And so some people got three different notices because it happened here, it happened here, it happened over there.
Okay, we got my attention.
Yeah, and that's the intent of that. Outdoor warning is there just for outdoor and, you know, you need those indoor alerts as well, and I think it's a good system.
I noticed that much. I had the weather on, and a crawler line, and we're talking about fever from valley.
That's a big surprise.
They, now they have the, between the two warning exam, the humps intermix.
So we had a good mix of weather spotters out there, you know, Thursday fires, local weather spotters out west. I think ten with north and south. We had an area pretty well covered.
It was really spotted. I mean, we usually get tons of branches in my yard for even, you know, if I cough outside. I didn't get branches, but just a half mile across the field. In my place, my nephew got a lot of corn back down.
Yeah.
So I was kind of surprised I didn't see anybody else like that, but.
I think officially probably sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
We don't have any nominees on our stuff, so we just tell them that's, that's, yes, we can. So I have a list of questions. I did give a water report to Don. It's a fair six to five day report that the landfill uses for some grant applications and stuff. They provide that to me easier every year. If you do look at the report, there's some things in there that were really strange. If August was our highest peak, which is one, which is usually just opposite of that. That's in the graph there, I think. And then it's a day by day report as well, so. I have no questions. Unless you have something to me.
Good job, Jim. Keeping everybody, give us a couple of updates.
Well, we've got weather spotting, this happens, so the only reason I gave you the, not the only reason, but I wanted to make you aware that we did activate, that's why. Second by second. Pod exercise, full-scale exercise tonight from four to six thirty. So we're not going to have some time to turn that side tomorrow. If you come involved, we'll give you a shot there.
Is that's flu vaccine?
Yeah, on the back.
That's flu vaccine?
They say you can have a.
As long as your nerves are, you might as well get better.
Jay just said, Jay just gave me this message that, um, if the nurses, if, if the courthouse is interested or the county are interested, they would come here and get flu shots.
Confusion.
She's to do that next Tuesday?
There'll be, there'll be leftover vaccine thorns about then. The county, the county will be sorry.
So this will be the end of, they said end of October, first part in November.
I just saw something about you that said with all the school and all, they say you should get your shots as soon as you can.
Exactly. So we can send a sheet around and see if people are interested in.
Are they charging anything?
The, the norm doesn't say.
Well, that would maybe be a question to ask because our employees can get it under their health insurance if we had no cost. So pay to see a capital paid or something.
Thank you for tomorrow.
I got a subscription.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think they took.
How well is that advertised? I'm working here, this is the first I heard that it could happen.
It was in the newspaper, I think Mary told me. And then she also said there was an announcement that the grant award was made for a landfill.
I saw that, a hundred and forty thousand bucks.
I, I saw that in the newspaper.
I seen that in, on my phone come up.
Oh, no, that was in the newspaper.
That had to have been sent to the paper last week in order to get.
Pretty good. You're just headed in Watertown, I think there's Watertown paper too.
Well, I, I mean, I've got the, I've got the things today.
What was it for?
For the. Land. Landfill.
Landfill grant. We've got twenty-five percent.
Okay.
Hundred and fourteen thousand more than this.
Hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars granted. So now I can go ahead. I got the paperwork all done for Dennis to sign today. And, um, let's get that sent in and then we can.
Consider it.
Send in for the review. So whenever you're ready. But that happens all the time. But the D E N R or Department of Agriculture and all, I got to say it properly. They, they'll always do that, they'll send it out. Or DOT will do the same thing with the highway stuff.
Long as we get it, I don't care. Long as we get it.
As long as we're waiting for this, I guess.
All right, thanks, Tom. First comment according to Crazy Dog. Well, we had before, yesterday we had gone again.
You were decent, sir. You? Those are very good.
Beautiful. Yeah, the, the beans, you know, I mean, it's a good year, but yeah, she's a pretty like this one that keeps going. Yeah, I think it's, that's your old stuff, you know. Good year, how, how much are you going to have to crop up? Just like you said, do you have to get that field?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's going to raise their rents next year probably too, so. Yeah, it's it's kind of a double-edged sword.
I think it's about a one-year thing and then a lot of people are going to get caught.
Yeah, it probably is.
No, I just have to send that stuff in, look around.
For authorization, I'm answering, okay. We need a motion for authorization for me to sign on grant award. By simple, second by Carlson. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same. Aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, we didn't even, nobody even had to.
Yeah, you mentioned that sometimes we have to.
Usually, yeah, we, you know, somebody's always had to go down and.
Uh, the domestic abuse transfer, eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. We need a motion to approve that transfer. Johnston, second by again. All in favor, signify the same. I will circulate the auditor's confidential treasure.
We've got to buy our own water, clean the drains. I'm sure you can buy something for not a whole lot of money. Here's a hundred and sixty-four dollars, that seems to happen two, three, four times a year. I'm sure you can buy a machine for that amount of money. I can't imagine it takes a lot to figure out how to operate it. Cody's going to be gone for a year. Yeah, he was gone.
This people, that's our agent.
Cody Malmas, he was kind of going to take over the maintenance end of it. And now he's got Floyd last week.
Some of it might be advanced.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, I mean, his grandpa just died and then the next day he had a blue water board. And then the next day, if that's the boy. Do you do services, do you work at church in the country? Can't practice. You go to the South and Wild and that, have you done services in before? Interesting guy. Oh, boy, okay, you know, weird. Oh, I had never seen him before. He's, comes in, he's like a cowboy shirt on and he knew getting quite well, I guess, so it was a nice service, I guess, one of the nicest ones. He goes to a lot of those places and he's seen, he had all this kind of stuff. He used to talk about beer, he made jokes. Uh, he's a nice guy. Nice little church.
One. Joe asked something about salary. Had, is that some protective session or?
Yeah, maybe.
Is that a motion?
I think it's a protective session.
Motion by example for executive session to discuss personnel, second by Carlson, all in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, they're really awesome, actually. How do you know they're these?
How do you know they're bees?
Yeah.
Ah, muddy out there.
I bet. Now the rain's coming tomorrow, I think.
I'm not gonna make it tomorrow. My gauge is two and a half inches just moved last week.
Really? They had like an inch one on Saturday. I don't know what we had prior to that. Well, yes, we had, yeah, we had eighty-five hundred before that, so you know, probably same. Starting to follow around the country.
I didn't know we were on break.
Whenever Beezer comes, we're always going.
Yeah, he has gone a break with Beezer. Why, he has, they knew I had to come and hook up, that's why.
If it is a Beezer, it's highway soup.
Well, they knew I had to come here with a camera system. Take a break while he comes in. Since I was over being jabbered at with Jay.
Where in the heck's? Our normal guy. Not even on there now. Tell you just one thing, thanks so far. You know, I see my, you can pay cash or you do those. Well, that's. Everybody do that.
Right, and it's easier said.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. My customer, hundred one forty-two, I have contact with him.
Okay, I have a question then.
I'll give him excuse, excuses, you know, he said his secretary had to quit for six years, so he was trying to do all this on his own.
Remember watching.
I told him, I told him, that was me. I'm going to walk and try to explain to him. Damn, about you.
Where's that company auto? One forty pieces.
Over by, uh, Ortonville.
Everybody wants to. Next blows that we had, always state and state stuff.
No, that's right, we. Come out, be able to tell them where they is.
Gotta give this to him exactly this all done.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's really good, Peterson. That's the water. And table thing.
Okay, what are we going to follow up on from last week? The, is it the netting, the cages and stuff?
I haven't heard a whole lot more on the netting of this. Man Rock out of Raft City, he just kind of sent me an email saying, I just want to let you know I haven't forgotten this. And a meeting with the engineers today and I hope I can get some contact information for you. I also wanted to check out our spare netting we have on hand. Maybe I can get the label for manufacturing for off of that. You know, so he's writing, so he got his netting all back. Well, the company not got back to me at all yet, but I talked to them, jugs. We're having a little problem out there with water, of course. My new cells, uh, bottom's about two third covered with water now. You know, it's been slowly going out, but I can't put my garbage or nothing in it until all the tests are all ran and that the proofability and the. Moisture contents and all that test were done and they gave a week and a half, two weeks to run.
Yeah, which you dry first.
Yeah.
By the way, it's raining coming tomorrow.
Yeah, so. By the time I get to going, there's probably gonna be soaked with water. Will we pump in that or? I don't know if it's causing, the siltings coming down with all this rain and creating a little film over the top of the drainage system, so it's. It's running, but it's very slow. You know, and my little ponds is this, they're getting full.
The land's sitting down there.
Can you get a pump from another highway department, that P T O pump and or anything like that?
I got a little, I got a little two, uh, this two inch pump that I'm gonna shoot pump, a small pond, it's my big pond. Um, it'll take two, three days to drop it six inches. And then I had to stop and buy a carver for that on the way here.
Is that the biggest water pump we have? Is it two inch?
No, we got that big one.
Between the state and, or I mean.
I do have that P T O one. It's actually a little ten inch, but that's a little overkill, you know.
I see.
And it's, it's. You're gonna have to have a tractor out there with a P T O on it, which I do not have.
Yeah.
You know, so, but if I use, I used it in the past, but just had my little pond, our pond. Those get too full, so instead of discharging it, I pumped in trucks and followed up the room. In the past, we've got two million gallons on here.
Oh, boy. Cool, take job.
But yeah, this little two inch will lower that little pond into my big pond in a few days.
You can gain now with the two inch.
Yeah, as soon as they get covered with water. The scraper, uh, me and Pat talked about that. It, it, it's running good now and everything's working on and everything, but it does need a back engine starter. If, uh. What will take off the starter was out. It'll take out a. Where's the manifold? No, the manifold leaks. But anyway, we gotta get that starter fixed, like eight hundred fifty dollars starter. And get that put on. The manifold leaks, which eventually will have to be fixed. And then it's just fluids and filters and stuff like that.
The exhaust, exhaust manifold?
Yeah, I'm adding that in.
What, what's in Detroit?
I think it's just four zone Detroit, I think. A four zone Detroit, maybe?
Four zone Detroit, no idea.
Can, can Tim swap out that starter? That's all Tim can do?
I think it's all they do would cost eight hundred fifty bucks to get started.
No, I know where Webster, I'd take it. Tim could take it off and take it to hand.
Oh, to rebuild it, that's what you're talking about.
They can't rebuild that?
Yeah, they can. It'd be worth a chop in Webster.
They'd quit a bit cheaper.
She better ask him about eight hundred fifty. That's pretty jump.
Would you pass some kind of warranty with it?
He usually gives that ham and makes a year about like, he claims they're better than new when he gets done.
What was that phrase?
Hampton repairs. He don't want to do it.
No, right. The name of Big and Water's on Hampton.
Yeah. Give them a call one time and just tell them what you got.
Um, we also talked about upgrading our old wrecks, you know, seeing what was, what was also available. I did call Cat and I called John Deere. They haven't got it back to me yet. But I got a reply from Landville Equipment, who actually sells wrecks, contractors. Right now, we got two thousand seven. It's a big machine though. It's a big spot. My unit right now probably weighs about sixty-five thousand pounds. This one runs up to eighty thousand. She's gonna give you more information, but as of right now. She's sitting at seventy thousand dollars. It's two thousand seven. And, uh, they're looking at a trading value for ours, seven grand. So I'm sitting two thousand and two plus shipping.
Plus what shipping?
Plus shipping, plus shipping. And she's been giving estimates on, she, I actually, she called when I was on my way in. She's gonna give an estimate for shipping. More details on how many hours are on it. Uh, the horsepower, everything like that can add to this estimate she just gave me. I mean, the other day, I got it. She's gonna add to that with all the rest of the information.
How far away is that?
Hercules, Missouri.
Oh, wow. Big loop.
What's the year of our comp, our compactor?
Ours is a.
Probably ninety.
Ninety-six.
Ninety, ninety-six.
Do you want one?
Yes.
Is that, will you add to newer better or worse?
Well, it's gonna be bigger and better for compaction reason. Might be a little clumsy to get them on them little cells if we were using. But with more information, I don't know what the turning radius is, if it turns fast enough or anything like that, but she's ready to give me that.
It's hit through the doors of our shed either.
Yeah, you gotta see how wide or make sure it's bigger or smaller.
I read a little bit on it. It's got eleven foot wide wheel passage, so the doors are probably a little bit wider. And, uh, so if it's only a little bit wider than twelve foot doors in front, we got a fourteen foot door going. Height, I don't know, but I'll, I'll give more details on that.
That time that we sent that other one in to rebuild, was it about fifteen grand to rent that one for the time period? That, that when we sent the other one in for a rebuild?
For the new one?
Refurbish?
We didn't do it for a time, no.
But we had a quote.
Yeah, yeah, it was like fifteen grand or something like that.
For, for the time period to, to rebuild it. Whatever that took, three to six months or whatever it was.
Was that six months, well?
Yeah, I think it was less than three months.
Was it less than three?
We got it three.
About five grand a month then.
What did, what did the rebuild cost?
What did you pay? Around three, three and a half?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Little grand dollar.
We financed two hundred of it. About three and a quarter or something like that.
I wish I'd hear back from Cat or Butler. Um, maybe I'll give them a call again today and see if they're finding. One of my, one time said there's one over in Aberdeen. Bowl mating and that probably would be actually a bigger than this one.
The one we have doesn't even function anymore?
Oh, it doesn't function. It's just, it was, I'll, I'll open this. We put a lot of money into it and you still don't have no cleats, still don't have no decent air conditioning, you're still gonna have, you know, a lot of your little problems.
I'm surprised this company would allow you seven grand without looking at it.
I just took some pictures. I sent it to them. She sent me, I think we got a picture.
What's trucking, five dollars a mile or something like that?
You guys can see that. That's just a door.
That's the old one?
No, this is the one we were about to possibly purchase. There's the teeth on it. That's what I do. That's what she sent me.
You know him, huh?
No, it was a model race.
Okay.
See there's no teeth left on there.
Pretty flat.
That's what we got for the back. Rover on a steel face roller.
Take it on the highway, they can use it when you're telling.
Yeah, I'll just keep looking into everything. Pressing on there. Hurry up and die against anything until I get a phone. But, um, I'll still, if we do anything, if we have to peat around. We'll let hold our, our cells and just go stick some poles up. And just tear it on the fence and save what we can. Put a little up here, put a little up there. Yeah, I'll get my fingers slapped too hard and not get it done right away.
Have you talked to Chris Pacey? Chris Pacey said that.
Travis.
Travis.
I hadn't talked to him since, until I get okay, it'll be something I'll talk to him. But if he's ever put up that, that liable thing. But he's the one that told me he can't find nothing else, besides wall and wire or chain link fence. Wall and wire is too big, chain link is too expensive. The worst comes to worst, I'm gonna try to get the catch cages. Soon as I get that, these guys, these guys from Florida.
Was that right?
These guys got something they're supposed to buy, so.
But I bet it's just gonna be tough to get anything anymore. It is with this whole supply chain thing. I don't know what that stuff is doing to that, but. I feel like it's been being channeled.
Yeah, they quoted me that. They probably. Netting for my catch cages are the small pieces, but as far as my whole fence and all my others, we didn't get to do that. Thought you'd be a thankful guy. So if we did go with that, I said it was in the process. Yeah. Oh, ninety-six, seventy. Must work for you. Four thousand six hundred dollars for the catch cages. I'll get a little more kinds of data from. Places around here.
You intend to put all one piece of each of them?
I think I have one, yeah. They make it to wherever you want. You can get it down.
No, I'm talking about to get wider.
If I get wider, well, that's gonna be sectioned.
Five, five foot six.
Whatever they, I can get them. I've got some four foot off, I've got some five foot off, I've got some six foot off that I can take down. Eventually take down. Two years old too. All ripped up and that passed already. I haven't heard anything from, uh, Western Valley Records of auto lightings yet. Lightning yet, but it's off from that. All the holes, anything like that. Anyway, any other questions for the, for the guys?
I don't think so. Thank you. Thanks a million. Cap's coming in, if you want.
There he is.
Hello.
Morning.
How's it going today?
First. Was that oil on here? This is free.
What do you want?
Well, that's empty, hundred. Oh, yeah, the oil. Free?
Gravelling, yep?
Yep. I didn't have a lot. I just had a couple things, so. The first district has a deal they have to download and do for us to get the app downloaded from the state because they have an infrastructure gap. So it's two hundred and fifty dollars and then they'll have to. So it's two hundred and fifty dollars and then they'll have to send it to Tammy so she can download the stuff from the state. So it's another two hundred and fifty dollars from the district.
Reimbursable, but.
Yeah, we'll have to just take the funds out of that one. So once they get back, we'll make, if you want to make a motion on that. We went back and forth with Sherry trying to get this GIS number and all this crap for like three weeks now. Two weeks for sure. So finally, they said, well, this guy came back today that we'd be able to get him to get it set up at First District. And then what they'll do is, we get this somewhere, somehow get the app downloaded from the state finally, which we do have, that we can just download it again once we get this fire. And then, um, what happens is after you get going on there, the app on the state, you know, that just keeps track of all the people that are doing their infrastructure. Uh, then evidently First District will make them out or get the product in the end and have it for our installment deal. So I don't know if that's part of this being, or one of these, or other than that part of it, is that we can run that and so that we can start.
Start going to have nothing else.
So I can pass that around to the chairman now, if you want to make a motion on paying that two hundred and fifty dollars for First District, so.
Now, this is for that.
So we can get downloaded with the state, so that we can get the app downloaded so that we can do the infrastructure.
And then realize that this is gonna come out of the.
Sixty grand.
But why are we being, you know, we pay dues to First District, why aren't we being billed? Even if we can take it off of our thing, or because it's our private highway department?
No, because it's a different type of thing that they're.
It's a different service that they're giving.
Service thing. It's an app thing.
So do we have the student at the services they provide, I mean, is nickel and diming us from the First District irritating me?
They got a new building phase that trying to pay for it.
I think if we were still with the other district, planning district out of Aberdeen, we'd be paying those fees.
Know what you mean, that's. Always paying them guys something.
Well, it started out with that Sherry has the number, this thing that was just out of our county.
All the bill are not bad.
So you gotta go to First District to get it and then start over and just to get the app.
Is there a motion to approve the two hundred and fifty dollar expense for this?
Yeah, Michael Joyce, dude.
No, if you wanna play, you can pay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
That's Don's copy, so she can have that copy. She'll end up getting the bill and Don will have to pay for that.
It doesn't look like there's any choice for me to shine her.
Now, I said, as long as I can just get it to there, that's all here.
So you guys sent it out?
So she didn't send it, she just, you know, she, well, she sent it back to him, but she didn't know that would actually be the billing. But if you're gonna get a bill, so why don't you give you that copy? So whether that's gonna be what they use for the bill and not.
I have to get that signed. I need to have that in my binder anyway.
Exactly. So a little discussion on the scraper again, we ran that thing and it ran like a million bucks technically, ran and around and around and around, nothing got hot. And I think it's because the axles went quite right before when we were working on it. The things that are wrong is the starter's bad in the back engine. And the, the manifold gasket's out of the back engine, so when you started up, it blew the black smoke out and then that's where you go. Will you get a vibe of that for a while? Just to run it a little bit, run it a little bit. You're very sure if it lets run a lot, that gasket's gonna get warm and things gonna be a little, they're already might end up damaging the, the manifold gasket. And maybe are they cleaning up that end, I don't know.
Is it correct, the manifold?
Yeah, crack manifold, there's two broken molds a minute.
Are they, what's on there Detroit, are they six?
There's six.
Might have one.
I won't be on this. You know, Beezer is gonna end up wanting to run it, and Lantrell wants it under cover until it freezes and Doug gets it all, whatever they want to do, you know, with it. But we gotta get it serviced, so we got filters on. Do the planetary's filters, oh, change the ton, if you don't get it serviced, I got filters coming for the transmissions. Because those two transmission filters in there haven't been changed in city. And then when the planetary isn't, uh, oiled, the check, they do all that, and we did set up the front brakes on there a little bit, so jog a little bit down in the back, and we got it on three for a while. We didn't see it getting hot when it was running. I mean, we ran it around and around and around, trying to get it warmed up good, and there was nothing getting hot in the back there. What he was saying is, when we put the axles in, of course they looked a long way. That was free spinning in there and probably was going a hundred miles an hour, and I'm thinking that created a lot of heat, and that was maybe what was getting hot.
Who, who put in that for it?
Well, I think other guys did somewhere along the line, because Tim, that one of them all once, he did some work a while ago, a few years back. And when we took it further, there wasn't much else. So we did fix it.
Ten years ago or better, I mean, because it's south of there.
Well, we used it down in nineteen fifty, I claim, and that was about high six years ago. So anyway, got that going, the question is, the starter's eight hundred and thirty-five bucks. And plus the filter things and all that kind of stuff, right? All, well, I'm gonna spend that money and it's really not only get all the highway unless you're gonna keep this over to the landfill or what's going on around there. It's a good machine running to get by, we can use it for, because it's, you know, it's been fine, um, just under that, you know.
Beezer said something about it, my phone, check out that Hatton Repair over in Westfield.
Which one?
Hatton Repair. To take it off, did him a call, just asking whatever to do.
This is probably due until the summer, you know, I'm like, yeah, I was there, I said, just give me a price. Cause I'm done getting around with this thing, you know what I mean, I've been here for two weeks.
I would've checked there or whatever, I mean. Hope you're trying to keep using it now.
If you're gonna use it, you're gonna run it and get going with it, you know, and that's the case, otherwise nothing to turn around. So that's what the expenses are, and if that's long, we'll go. I called for a little bit, she said, but, you know, that's right for me and mine, and that's what they, you know, it's gonna be more expensive. But that comes with the, the stone right there, they all want to pass the map, we should make sure it wasn't just the starter, not the stone right there and else. And it's really acting up, so it has to change, because with starter and a few tires, and it's really gonna be hard on the housing if we don't do it, so. The fires, the, uh, the lands and all that, and then we're gonna get hot, and then we checked everything that way ahead, seemed to be good, so give it a bite for a while.
Still having brakes?
Front brakes, you said, I did a little bit for it. Yeah, we set up the front a little bit. Not bad in the way. So I don't know if you want me to just go ahead and get going on there or do that, but. You can use it, make it usable in the.
Check on Hatton and see if they can build it for half or something like that, it's worth it, I would like. I gotta get it going, of course, I know a lot of people take stuff home with it.
I'll check that, whatever, all we can call it, nuts. So I do have the other filters coming, whenever we get a chance, and it's gonna take time, but we'll do it all. Get the filters in, get that well in, and then, you know, lots and stuff, you know, so. But otherwise, you know, it's coming out of my budget, and I can still, so. I mean, that's what we're gonna do. That tire hold up good enough for what we got, no tire damage. The other thing, um, sixty-four thousand dollars of bills today for the highway. So we should be pretty much caught up with most of these now, so. Got a little outstanding bill on, uh, three thousand dollars on that asphalt over there now, that'll be coming up the next time. This is by two minutes just sent there, and they're like two months away, because we haven't even got nothing.
Yeah, so the two minutes was.
Yeah, we haven't even got anything since, oh, they're just saying, I feel like that's why I'm taking out. Otherwise, we would have had that earlier, you know, so again, so.
What do you say, doing crushing? What do you say, doing crushing gravel for next year?
Well, when I talk to Lee Hanson today, hopefully Cody is coming up this job, and hopefully at this month or something, this fall. And if he's gonna crush it, we should have some crush for us too. Right now, we're getting, we got a lot of Christians who split down south of Oklahoma. And I'm getting, I'm gonna get close to two thousand ton, it'll be about nine thousand bucks, because we're doing some roads down there and it's four and a half dollars a ton.
But that today, but even higher, John's up.
So we got lucky, we got over thirty thousand ton crushing deposit out there, and we're keeping track, and that's all.
Why did you jump off the highway, is this demand?
Since last year, yeah, I was never going off and stuff and then loading whatever. I'd crush you, but if we do that, it won't be as high.
That whole big pile on Heine's all went to the interstate, four and some hundred ton.
And that all went to interstate and shoulders and stuff. So, yeah.
What do you think of that gravel Heine, Christians, and that's your gravel, ain't it? I think everybody's gonna bury that.
Yeah, it's a good job, well, I'm putting down, you know, so. Running around the range tomorrow.
It's a lot closer to, right?
Yeah, it's a hundred and seven miles away, seven hundred miles away, so. So, but that's what we're out with that. If he gets up here this fall and we get a challenge, you know, we'll see when.
Yeah, I think she does.
Wonder whether it's in the time of what he does. Then after next week, we can get another rest after the building, get hands, you know, that, because we should have a good handle on that. We got a lot of work we're still trying to do and all that, after we've done gravel, we got a bit of time, or at least a lot of work, it's not. Oh, it's been around good. That little neck, you know, bottom, something, it settled over right down the way, you know, there's a couple stone lines that change around, a couple of things.
It used to be red ones, right?
We got the turbine blades on it, uh, we had to switch out from the ring ring blade that came with it, because he wore that down.
Put the other and then I got my face.
When I get these, my clothes back on.
Don't break any more windows. Hit that, yeah, I, I tell you, I'm only wondering, because I grew up, that was the best shit I've seen since I lived here.
Nah, that's good. Supposed to go there today, though.
Not a special washboard, and it's nice column.
Hopefully it's good.
Works nice, they do a good job.
And we had, uh, last week, we were up on thirty-two in my west, and so I compliment on that, that was pretty good. You know, these roads get pretty washboardy nowadays, with the semi traffic and harvest going, you can't keep up, so.
Yesterday, we went to C three, went up to Lake City with your C G H, you know, that, more of a coming gravel going in.
Yeah.
If you drive fifteen miles an hour, your teeth are gonna rattle, my God, I've never seen a washboard that bad, man.
Well, then now, you know, we did almost thirty-one, went back and drew, um, plate and done, it's, you know, thirty-one. So then, you know, our twenty-four minutes come out, and we just haven't got to it yet, so.
She ought to settle down a little better.
Well, I think so.
You know, that C G Hollow Road looks so nice, and then why did they put fog lines on that road? As Marshall County's got fog lines and Roberts County does not, looks, looks like it's.
Well, they asked me.
It's half done.
They asked me, okay, and I'm like, you don't put lines in there, and that's what I told me. Said, I don't think they should do it anyway, I do it, but it's in the plan, I said, whatever, I said, but, you know. They think we need a center line down for one mile coming out there. When we do our road coming into the park hopefully next year, and get that done, I mean, then you can put center line down and make it all one edge road.
Well, it's not white, it's not white enough for center lines. If you could tell that there was miscommunication there, where they were told to start the fog line at the red flag. Well, you've been up there, they've got.
Yeah.
Fog line on the north side of the road where the red flag starts in Roberts County, well, that's the wrong spot. So then they shut the sprayer off after about two hundred feet or whatever.
Yeah.
Then they went down till they hit the Marshall County line where there's two red flags, and then they got white fog lines to. But that road.
The fog line, that road.
They asked me, they asked me about fog line and center line. And now, what they asked for in the dreamer with Roberts, uh, with, uh, Marshall County, but doing center line and fog line, well, I suppose it's all in the projects. I told them, I said, I don't want our stuff, I'm not paying for that. I said, I don't know, how do you think you're gonna get a center line?
It's not white enough, unless you're riding a motorcycle.
So anyway, that's why, that's why some of it's done and some of it's not. And I have to get the bill from Marshall County, which has a center in the box, so. So it'll be around a thousand bucks, most soon as I get it, then I can get that sheet so we can get paid seventy-five percent back from them.
Oh, true.
Maybe that would help us, maybe we can see if it's crotch. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
We are looking, that show a week, or has anybody had a chance?
We can look at it for a week. Teresa's gonna be coming next week or calling in, one or the other.
I just would luck out, I think.
Did they see the four, four point?
Four.
Four point, yeah. Yeah.
I was very, very pleased with.
I was, I was hoping stuff was gonna.
I guess it's a good idea. You have to keep it.
Well, and, you know, the art, and now we've got, you know. But, yeah, I was, I was pleased with the quote.
Everything else stays the same, it looks like the Pope is in the.
There is, she did have on there.
Looked something, yeah.
A SIM thing, and I, and I, I asked for clarification, so actually you guys have two different things, and one kind of explains about that SIM. Bio-similar, bio-similar tier added, so there is a packet in there that explains that.
The chain is where the, is added on the bio-similar of one forty to a specialty drug, is that one you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Take that.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a special Detroit.
It's a one that's, and it's for. It's like, it's biologically made or something like that. I didn't read too old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good move.
I thought that was really, really good. Well, well, Jay, yeah, Jay wants to come in too, go ahead.
No, Dave can.
Okay. Jay, you wanna go down? Jay, you wanna go down and say?
My questions are at the expenses.
Oh, okay. Let me see here if I get mine, if I've gotten it, babe.
On, um, nine-one-one telephone. We didn't budget anything on the service contract, and yet we paid, you know, we have a negative thirty-five hundred.
Oh, that's what we paid for the, to first finding district separate for. For they helped us with the nine-one-one addressing?
Okay, and so we never budgeted anything there?
I thought we did.
We didn't budget. Are we looking at this wrong? We paid thirty-five hundred, so we have a negative thirty-five hundred. Page forty-four. Maybe they'll get up, and I'm also questioning why, um, repairs and maintenance, we had budgeted a thousand, and we're.
I wait to use them.
Thirteen thousand five twenty-nine for, on the same project, seventy-one.
Good morning, Jamie.
We're waiting for a grant on that one, that's probably the grant that we're supposed to be getting.
Okay.
Jay.
Morning. We done our bid now for White River State, just in a, we got a couple of weeks ago. Um, they came in right at fifty-one hundred dollars. Um, the only thing that I wanted to run past you again or whatever is they, they came with their site survey, they can't use the elevator, cause it weighs too much. Um, they're bringing up the front steps, they didn't know if they had to hire five, six guys to carry them, or if they were gonna be using motorized cart to. To work it up the steps, but what they want is that they would, this carrier also wants a signed waiver stating that they would hold no liability for damage to the man at stairs. So, that's where we're at.
Did they say what, why?
Well, with the, the cart that they would use to have to transport them or not, it's gonna be right at between nine hundred and a thousand. Is that that?
They don't want a big gun safe, right?
Of course, the, the, the safe itself is over eight hundred, and the cart is another hundred and twenty.
Doesn't seem so terribly heavy, does it?
I had that kind of problem.
I mean, them, you know, fireproof gun safes, they really, you know, pounds. Who'd them in this, I wouldn't think, I mean, that is my, I wouldn't think that they.
I think what they're concerned about is our flooring out here, the gran, the granite, you know, the steps and.
The steps is what they.
What would happen, is that, well, they didn't know plywood or something?
Well, once we got to the top of the steps, then we would put plywood on down, three quarters plywood would be good for the deal, so we wouldn't have to worry about the tile floor, but. When they're, if they use that motorized cart lifting it up the steps, it, it's got cogs that come around, and then they put on the steps, and then that lifts the whole wheels up or whatever, so. Those, those little, those little wheels, the cogs or whatever that are on that motorized belt would only, you know, just wide on two spots on the steps. And I don't want to be.
Some kind of, turning the steps, it kind of disperses that weight, or?
Could six, eight guys carry that?
That's a.
No, we just lay it, old step itself, the steps like this wise, cut, piece of three quarters plywood, and then it's just came down, and you make it spread it out a little bit. Right, yeah.
That's an idea.
How many steps are there right up there, six, seven, six, seven, okay.
Go on, I didn't get some more in straps, and I'd say you get, just like a coffin carrier.
Either that or, or build a stretcher and get six or eight guys on, three, four on each side. You could distribute that weight really easy that way. You know, the thought occurred to me too, that at one time we talked about getting a scissor lift in to redo that rotunda, and you'd need a ramp system anyway to get something that heavy up, but. Mr. Upsall isn't with us anymore, so that idea went by the wayside, but, um, I don't know. What had, did you talk to Doug Karst at all about?
We visited with Doug, I haven't talked to him about this here process yet, but we talked about the floor, and he even said, you know, we wet plywood down on the floor once we got it, actually, but.
Yeah.
Haven't really visited with both of them. The step, whatever.
Otherwise, would they, would you use that motorized, you just like, uh, applying stally, what you typically use?
Basically, this is what it is, we would have an electric motorized, takes all the lift out of, you get the wheels to leave the step.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would think if we just put some plywood down on those steps, that.
I would.
We, you know, get a piece of quartz steel, just really spread it out, you know.
I would go along the way, but, whatever, what do you think down there, I think it's pretty. I mean, we're gonna put a plank, play with plank, or whatever, on the conceptual, this car, and that's a play with sort of a, for distribution. It's not, it's not bad, like eighty-hundred pounds.
It's not really heavy, I would say.
Yeah. I mean, it's a lot, if you're gonna put it on a couple.
Wait, did you get on the edge or something like that? Yeah, especially if you get in the middle of the step then too, you know.
Maybe a board for one side or whatever, where you're not ready enough, you know.
Yeah.
Are the, are the wheels fairly wide on that cart? They're narrow, narrow wheels too, and I don't imagine they're pneumatic either, they're probably solid, solid rubber.
Too light for all, and I don't want that. I think that'd be fine, you know.
I mean, it's just a lot of, a lot of weight, a lot of, you know.
Doesn't like to have some ideas, possibly just rank, make a ramp there for that.
Yeah, I guess I would like to plank down and then plank, whatever, you could connect a board or something, so it doesn't. Yes, you know, and we take a moment to maneuver, you know, to do that, but I would build a frame, you know.
Church did something similar to that, when they moved the piano off the, that tile floor down to the other, they built a ramp for that baby grand, moving back and forth. And everything, you guys could come up with something.
And they give away, I guess, I would, I don't see, they're not gonna believe it, if you don't, they don't suppose.
Negative, no.
There's two, two steps, two series of steps, that little landing, you know, before you start to move. Ramp it out to first, and then move ramp to second, and after that, ramp it all the way out. You either build a ramp, or plank it or whatever, I think it works.
Okay, you guys roll that canic? We searched a little bit more. Um, it's out to the county hall, they're showing a lot of blue shots.
Oh, yeah.
And she never got back to me, and said there was gonna be a charge, but she got headcount, they would come in the end of October, maybe the first part of November, and dig the shots up there. We just needed a head count.
I can't remember, I think they took, um, insurance card information last year when they did it.
You know, you've got a lot, didn't you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Well, that might be a, sorry, I'm sure there's a, whatever, coming around, because you're in a general type of deal.
What's that?
I missed out on, must have been a meeting, I missed, or something, I couldn't.
Maybe you already had yours, cause you get yours early.
I'm out of something.
Yeah, just go for it.
Well, this high health, like something up, and you're saying, yeah, we, we, we've been allowed going, that's fine. Um, weren't I, like, watching too as far as, like, a notary or whatever it is, a requirement for me to be in the notary up here at the car else, or is it? Is it just something that was always done, and I volunteered, and now I got it?
I think that, I think that's what.
Well, isn't several people in here?
Well, Sherri is a notary, and Jay's a notary, and Becky, that's the three notaries that we have.
What do you do upstairs or whatever?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But she likes to work, isn't it?
Yeah, it's kind of.
It's really handy, but the two, three times I need you, but, I mean.
It's, well, you can't pick and roll the trims or whatever, I mean, if you're, I mean, I've always just kind of dropped everything I'm doing and done it, but.
And you can refer people out, I mean, if you're busy doing something.
Do you have people coming in off the street to use it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the big problem, definitely.
Well, not, I mean, it's not just an out of liability or whatever, I don't know, just. Just kind of questionable, is it a requirement, or is it just something to sign up for?
Would you sign up for it?
When is your, when does it expire?
A long time.
But if you're busy, refer to Sherri, okay?
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, you can charge, you can charge.
I mean, he is doing it the right way, and you need to provide your driver's license, and he does it for you, and so, but, I mean, and it.
He, he is very thorough.
Yeah.
He does a good job.
How much do we charge, do you know?
No.
Oh, then, yeah, we should charge something, if you should.
We do agree, my mom's a, I think she charges ten bucks, five bucks, something like that, it's not very much.
Well, if we charge twenty, then we'll just refer.
Yeah, she does the ones, I'm very often, but she is one.
Charge for it.
Do they charge out the bank?
Don't think so, but primarily there, it's customers that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would say, you know, if it's in the line of something, he'd have to, or his job for.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Charge for something that's.
Who'd get walking off the streets saying?
Just twenty bucks.
Yeah, so and so wants me to not, not our, or what do you, what do you?
Nobody does not, yeah.
Yeah, charity.
I think so.
Maybe we need to set that for all.
All of them.
The three, because we pay, or we pay for their.
Right.
And the jail too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So they probably don't like, yeah.
That's, if it's a function of their job, that's, but it's just, the young customer server, if somebody walks them off the street, we should be charging.
Absolutely.
All right, the policy?
Well, he mentioned, I think he's uncomfortable with doing it for people that he doesn't really know.
Sure.
He did mention a little bit of liability there.
I think the fee would probably, one of the, one, be right to.
Yeah, we'd have to set a policy.
Yeah.
And then, you know, and then maybe start a new, new revenue source, so that we're going to the revenue.
Okay, um.
Dennis, did we get, did you see, um, motion on the auditor's account for treasure?
We did or not, did we, no? Is there a motion to approve that?
No.
Auditor's account for treasure, but, for gel. Second by Johnson, all in favor, signify the same eye.
I'll prove it.
Motion carries. Motion by simple to pay the claims, is there a second? Carlson, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Um, can I ask you about that, that car? That the insurance will pay us, um, that two thousand fourteen Taurus, um, from Russell. I asked Tyler about it, and he is, you know, they set the value, Tyler and the Tom of Russell set the value of five thousand dollars. And we're, that's coming up of their billing hours, so, um, I guess, and then they had to. Our sheriff's department had to put on some new equipment, a new radio and a new light bar. That was another added expense, so we, and they, the insurance company told it out, so we paid the insurance. And their mind was putting it, adding it to the policy, so we would get a check for ten thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. But I guess I need authorization to be able to sign off on that.
Does that sound legit to me?
No.
Do you know, can we take like the light bar back off, or?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, they'll take it again.
They'll pay us, the insurance will pay us to take, take.
Oh, okay.
Their equipment out of there, before they come and get the car. I had another email from Blake Dykstra, from our claims associate, so, just kind of wondering, and I told him I'd get it done today.
See if you can get a couple more of them, kind of ours. We need more.
I would say you should authorize me to sign it.
Carlson, second by the gel. All in favor of that, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's awful good of the public alliance to acknowledge that.
What's the Anics building on, or what?
Well, the Anics building, you guys have talked about possibly doing something with the rent. As you can see, Gina pays one seventy-five a month, um, Duty pays two hundred and fifty a month, which is for the two different, for the two offices. So if you want to increase the rates. No one pays for that, for the big, um. Move unless they wanna, you know, if they're, if they're going to rent it for something, but, I mean, nobody utilizes that clearly.
Well, I think if, at least we should set a square foot, and charge them all, say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a buck and a half or something.
Well, whatever is the going rate, I guess I'm sure.
The big one is where we add them. Do you, maybe, or whatever?
Yeah, you walk in, that's a big move.
And nobody did that, or?
No, nobody ever.
Gina's paying a dollar sixteen, and if you were to apply a dollar sixteen to Duty's area, he would, he would go to two ninety-two.
Tom mentioned a buck and a half, do you know, I mean, I have no idea what a, what a rich shooter should not be.
Uh, then Gina's would go to two twenty-five.
Yeah, buck and a half. Is, is that a reasonable number, I mean, I think they don't know.
I don't know nothing about that red stuff.
And then Duty's would go to three seventy-eight.
Three seventy-eight?
We don't have, like, um, how hard is it to run the expenses for, say, last year, I'm building heat, electricity, repairs, maintenance? Divide it by half, because the basement is basically, you know.
Hopefully, a couple of fifty, sixty thousand dollar upgraded heat, uh, air conditioning system there, that's.
I wonder what that cost, uh, just for the heat, and I've heard of the cooling, the building, and then.
And then you take off a little bit the basement, you know, and then.
Well, and then for the weed and the emergency management, cause they're utilizing.
But, but, no, but I mean, what I'm saying is, you know, if you get all the expenses.
Yeah.
And then can divide it out by square feet, and then you eliminate, you know, weed, you know, those, but you still have your square feet.
Oh, sure, okay. I can do that.
There's not a lot of work.
I didn't, no, it's not. I, I didn't get that done this week, last week, so, and I didn't come in yesterday.
Oh, we're not in a war ball, at the end.
We're gonna give them thirty days' notice anyway, so, yeah, we can get this.
We're pretty bad with.
In the next few weeks, yeah. Um, did you get a chance to look over the health insurance? Or, oh, I have two copies of that.
There, there's two different ones, Dennis, cause there's one that explains that bio, um, when it came out with that.
We'll look at this, we can come back next week.
Bio-similar tier.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what that was, so I, that's why Teresa sent me that other.
Okay.
Where did she come from?
Sioux Falls.
Okay, cause looking at this, I mean, to me, it's pretty clear, but I, you know, do we need her to come make a trip up here?
And I don't, she hasn't answered, she just said, should I call in, or do you wanna call me, so? It hasn't been set if, if we're just doing a call in, or, are you guys satisfied with just a call in?
I guess I am, I mean, a lot of stuff she goes sue, it's informative, but it's not really necessary, I mean.
If there's no thing that's been changed, it's pretty much, you know, where the claims were necessary.
I'll just have, I'll just have her call, call.
Yeah, we'll take the call.
Okay.
Has there changed anything a lot?
Yeah, we need to spend a few minutes. Yeah, we need to spend a few minutes and talk about that, and then we gotta hit the road in the next five minutes. Now, this contract, I see that we were missing the part about what they wanted as far as having communication with other communities in Roberts County.
That's in the.
It's in the West, yeah.
They already got that.
Oh. Well, I read it online and maybe I didn't page out for it.
Let's see. Yeah.
Sheriff, I continue, you need to follow this out, the county requests financial compensation for costing this debt. We're about slowing.
Okay.
Only question I have on that, maybe explain it to me. Is number four. City will reimburse on a pro rata, pro rate basis for 44,500 remaining for the remainder of the calendar year. Explain that to me. Basically, remaining.
I think it's canceled, why are you?
Okay, well, there's, something I, there's something I've missed. It's been in the contract and I'm gonna be reporting, that's all.
Well, I mean, do you guys read that? I mean, maybe I'm looking on the wrong.
If they have, okay.
I think it should be reimbursed, reimbursed, I wonder if that is in a table.
Will be reimbursed.
City will be reimbursed on a pro rate basis.
Okay.
Reimbursed.
Because they pay us.
Okay, if they're paying.
If they paid the whole contract.
The whole contract.
And they cancel, you know, reimburse them on a pro rate basis.
Right, yes. Meaning, meaning, yes.
City will be reimbursed.
Okay.
Rembursed, what did she, remaining, remaining and for the remainder. We got too many words in there? City will be reimbursed on a remaining for the.
For the, for the remainder.
For the remaining, for the remainder of the count.
Yeah, these are, we're making for the remaining.
Yeah, that's my only question. I don't think, would be remaining and for the remainder.
No.
One, two, three, all right, that was my only thing.
You know, when you, when you take a piece and you're.
Yeah.
You're eliminating sometimes.
Okay, that was the only one, yes.
That you do.
Yes.
She was.
I'll run this through, through Dylan and then I'll send it to the city, is that what you want?
I think so, yeah.
Move on, give it over.
Can you get some fresh copies?
Yep.
And I have one last question on this. Expenditures on the tip.
On the expenditure budget?
Yeah. Expenditures for last period.
Yep.
Okay, on the tip, a negative 144,000, 144,188. Probably be negative.
She had everyone.
Zero, page 61. Or you can look at it and tell it next week too, I mean, whatever, but.
But we only budgeted that 38,000 and there was more money that came in, so, but I'll, I'll look over it.
The balance sheet or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Were you supposed to respond back to the union or not today?
Do you wanna wait till after you, you're managing with the health industry?
I guess, I thought, that matters, yeah, I thought it probably ended up or matters, we can wait.
Meeting off to the jail.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna probably go up, you're just gonna look at that piece of equipment, aren't you? You're not gonna do anything anymore, or you like, give me kind of a, like, any more actions? No more actions, so I'm gonna wait.
No reason for me to walk in and be dragged out to any, should probably go our second way.
Yeah, we won't be doing any, anything.
Did we adjourn?
We did adjourn. We'll just do that out there, we should do that.
We'll adjourn out there.
You guys out there?
Nice, good.
This live stream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs. Countryside aid, assisted living and memory care in Roswell, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners and reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.